All right, we're live. We'll go ahead and get started. We'll call it to order. Right before we have Mr. Hickman give us a prayer, I want everyone to please, please remember, Wiley Brackett Senior in your prayers. They just given up that on Facebook that he's got 5% survival. So please, please remember him in your prayers tonight. Go ahead, Alan.
Let us pray. Kind heavenly Father, this once again that we humble ourselves before your presence, realizing how great you are, Father. Father God, we realize that you stood out on nothing, Father God, and spoke a word and created the heaven and earth. You created us, Father God, out of the dust, Father God. So, Father God, we just humble ourselves before your presence, realizing and admitting that we need you right now, Father. There's those sick in our community, Father. We ask God that you just allow healing, Father God, if it be thy will. Comfort the family, Father God. Strengthen us, let us know no matter what we face in this life, that your son Jesus Christ overcame all when he suffered blame down on Calvary's cross, Father. So, Father God, just use us right now in this meeting to represent the community, to conduct ourselves in Christ-like attitudes, Father God. Bless our country, Father God, as we see the division among us, Father God. We know that you came to die for all, Father God. So just, just bring us together, Father God. Let us represent this community well, and may you just be pleasing our efforts. This is our prayer in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ron Berry, if you could lead us into place.
Yes, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic which is theirs one nation under God visible, liberty, justice, all.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. We'll remind the commissioners tonight, when we vote, you decide your name, then cast your vote due to the Comptroller's advice. And also, if you can, to make it easier, when you want to make a motion, please say your name and state your motion or make your motion, just to make it easier for us, okay? Adam Clark.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Berry.
Are we, are we streaming live tonight?
We are on YouTube, on the Wrong County. People can go to the Wrong County Government on YouTube.
Good, thank you.
Where are?
Bishop Bell.
Present.
Barry.
Here.
Rashir.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
East.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Ann.
Here.
Hendrickson.
Here.
Esther.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Hooks.
Here.
Nando.
Here.
Moore.
Yeah.
White.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
That's fifteen present.
All fifteen commissioners being present. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting?
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, who was the first? Ben?
Ben.
Ben Gann had the motion. Jerry White had the second. Mr. Gann?
Nothing, Father.
Mr. White?
I have nothing to add.
Any questions or comments on the minutes of October nineteenth meeting? If not, call the row, please. Inspector, do you want you vote, please?
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham.
Cunningham, aye.
East?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, yes, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Esther?
Esther, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks? Mr. Hooks?
Got unmuted before you can hear me, right? Hooks, yes.
Thank you. Meadows?
Yes.
Moore?
Moore, yes.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. That's fifteen yes.
Okay, we'll move on now to the acceptance of committee reports and correspondence.
Motion made, please.
Motion by Mr. Meadows.
Hickman, second.
Second by Mr. Hickman. Mr. Meadows.
Nothing to add.
Mr. Hickman?
Nothing further.
Any questions on the acceptance of committee reports and correspondence? If not, call the row.
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Barry?
Barry, aye.
Rashir?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, aye.
East? Commissioner?
Yes.
Chairman Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Esther, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks?
Hooks, aye.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, yes.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Committee reports and correspondence has been approved. Madam Clark, the notaries, please.
We have five. Wesley J. Varger, Tammy J. Estes, Lisa L. Lopez, Benay S. Tice, and Eve Cook.
I've got a motion by
Andrew.
Henderson to elect
Wilson.
Second by Mr. Wilson to elect the notaries. Mr. Hendricks?
I just appreciate your willingness, sir.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Any more questions or comments on the election of notaries? Not Madam Clark, call the row.
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Barry?
Eric?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, aye.
East?
Yes.
Yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Esther, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks?
Hooks, aye.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, yes.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen yes.
Notaries has been elected. Now we'll move on to the county attorney's report.
Thank you, Randy. I apologize for not being here last month. I had planned a trip, and I didn't realize that our regular meeting day was Columbus Day. On October thirteen and October fifteen, we had Chancery Court. We disposed of twenty-three of the property maintenance cases on those particular dates. We have court again on December three. We have nine cases set for that day, and then we have court on February nine. Right now, we have ten cases set for February nine. I expect that those will increase. Regarding your zoning changes that you have on the agenda tonight, one of them will need to be postponed. That is eleven twenty oh one Z. The Hodges property, that's because you're required to have a public hearing before you can consider the zoning change. That is my report. Does anyone have any questions about anything?
Any question for the county attorney? Well, we'll move on to the county executive's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The resolution that our counselor just mentioned on the zoning, that gentleman received early notice, and he was here at the courthouse moments ago. He came, or was going back to Marietta, Georgia, so we need to consider that when we can meet. He was the owner of the property, and I guess he's in the process of getting it rezoned, maybe sell it or something, but just a couple of things I want to add. I hope you all are still getting the updates I'm doing about weekly, and as you can see, our numbers are our numbers, everybody else's numbers are continuing to climb. So, I do, I do updates about once a week, sometimes twice a week, but, you know, we are in the returns of about thirty to fifty new positives each day. We have a big announcement tomorrow down from V E C, Volunteer Electric, and it will be on a broadband expansion, some of those grants. I think we may have mentioned that before, but they want to do the official announcement tomorrow. Correspondence number nine in your packet dealt with the Comptroller's office did something a little bit different, or is doing something a little bit different. It's the nine key physically well-managed governments, what it takes, and it's seven keys, correspondence number nine. I'm glad to, proud to say that we're doing, I think, every one of those. Some of them we instituted in the last ten years, and some of them we have been under for decades, but if you get a chance, take a look at that. Got any questions, please give me a call. Glenn, I see he's on here, and he'll probably be working with some of your committees. Just wanted to bring to your attention that last year, we had basically three building inspectors in three positions, and we had someone who transferred out of one of those into another department. And because of COVID and everything else that was going on, Budget Committee and County Commission eliminated that position. But what we're finding out is constructions hasn't decreased any. Actually, it may have increased a little bit. We have a new school that will be bid out probably in the next sixty to ninety days. There'll be a lot of work has to be done on inspection of that, and then we have a Kingston Point development, so I think Glenn's going to be talking with some of his committees. We'll be talking to the Budget Committee, but we may need to go back and try to revisit that position and put it back in the budget. So, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have in my report. Be glad to comment on any resolution once it gets on the floor.
Any questions for the county attorney on his report? I mean, sorry, county executive on his report?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Mr. Berry? Mr. Woody, I was just, I was just curious, have we finished the census?
You know, I got a report today, but it was a financial one. I, I think the U.S. Census has completed, but I have not had any updates from them on any preliminary numbers.
Okay, and I guess my next question would be on our sales tax status. Are we, are we okay on our sales tax revenues?
Yeah, our sales tax actually is, and even the state of Tennessee is going better than normal. When you have a recession, I mentioned this before, the state gets hurt because they have an unlimited cap, and our cap is sixteen hundred dollars. So, we collect money on the first sixteen hundred dollar purchase, which means it's a lot of the Dollar Store, Lowe's, some Krogers, and your Walmart. So, the sales tax has been up, quite frankly. I didn't look at it this last month, but we've been seeing double-digit increases in most of our cities. I think Kingston has been flat. Of course, you know, they lost Ace Hardware and the Rite Aid, and but other than that, the sales tax as an aggregate has been up. You know, and most of that money goes into education.
I know there's a, there's a new tax. I didn't know if they've given us any projections on the, on the gaming tax in Tennessee now. Have they given us any projection on what that might be for us?
We have not received any projections on that. Is, does some of that come back to the local governments, or does it all go to the state, though?
I think some of it comes back to the local, local governments.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for the county executive?
One other question, right quick, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Woody, on, on, on our COVID, I know our health department is, is probably just wore to a frazzle with, with all of the stuff they've been, they've been doing. Is there anything that, that, that we need to do for them?
You know, I most
Other than pray?
Other than a parade, did you say?
Pray.
Yeah, other than pray. Most of health, health department is, is state employees, and we have several down there, but they work side by side, and and I know Laura, I talk to her periodically, and they're, they're just, you know, they're tired, they're wore out, like most everybody else that's been working through this. And of course, they're do, still doing the free, you know, test. We've had a number of employees that are in county government now, outside of the schools that are positive. Some are sicker than others, of course. So, and some of them have recovered, some of them's coming back to work, various things. And let me, let me mention one other thing. I don't know whether I had it written in my notes or not. I was kind of trying to go by memory also. Some of the last bit of money was seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars, and it had some restrictions on it. Those restrictions, most of them were released, and but we put in the portal for that money after they told us what we could, was eligible. I think we put in the portal for that almost three million dollars that was eligible money. So, that, that's on one of our resolutions tonight, where we're going to program some of that. But if there's more money that comes available, hopefully, they'll look at what we've already filed. We want it to refile it.
Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions? County, quick. Seeing none, before we move on to our regular agenda, I got a waive the twelve-day rule, which be waived the resolution eleven twenty eleven. It's a resolution to amend the General Fund one oh one for additional funding for nonprofit function five 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 nine zero that will go toward the Child Advocacy Center. I've got a motion to waive the twelve-day rule.
Wilson, motion?
Motion by
Matt, a second.
Second by Matt. Any comment, Mr. Wilson?
No, I just think this, I think this needs to be done as quickly as possible, if we can.
Meadows?
I agree with Commissioner Wilson, as we talked about just a little while ago, our sales tax projections are a little bit better than anticipated, and we need to help this nonprofit.
Okay.
Tell them how much they
Hold on, let me get, let me get the vote. If we go this, this is the, your yes vote on this, to waive the twelve-day rule and no vote.
Oh, are we through discussion, Mr. Chairman?
I don't think there's much discussion. I mean, we can discuss it once we get into it.
Very good.
Madam Clark, you could call the row.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Chairman, what is this vote on?
This is to waive the twelve-day rule.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Bell?
I already got nothing to.
Bell, yes.
Barry?
Barry, no.
Rashir?
Yes.
Cunningham?
You're muted, Charlie.
Cunningham, yes.
Commissioner East?
East, no.
Commissioner Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Esther, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hook?
Hooks, yes.
Lewis?
Hooks, yes.
Commissioner
Did you get my vote?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Mr. Moore?
Moore, no.
Commissioner White?
White, yes.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Twelve yes, three no.
Okay, we got a motion to waive the twelve-day rule. It is approved, so that will go on to either of our agenda. Under special orders, I got, we have a motion to approve the surety bond number six six three five five eight zero one for Connie Cook in the amount of a hundred thousand.
Motion.
Hendrickson, motion.
White, second.
White, second. Mr. Hendricks?
Nothing further. Needs to be done.
Mr. White?
I have nothing to add.
Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clark, call the row.
Commissioner Bell?
Bell, yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Barry, yes.
Commissioner Rashir?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
Commissioner East?
East, yes.
Lewis?
Ellis, yes.
Commissioner Gann?
Gann, yes.
Commissioner Hendrickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Esther?
Esther, yes.
Commissioner Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Commissioner Hooks?
Commissioner Hooks, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Moore, yes.
Commissioner White?
White, yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen yes.
So, the surety, the resolution for the surety bond for Connie Cook's been approved. Next, we have, we noticed during our last meeting, John Harvey, a long time with the nine-one-one board that served the Oliver Springs area, passed away, and Mr. Woody has put forth a name for nomination for us to consider for the government of that term. Confirmation appointment of Cecil Crowe to the E nine-one board, the new term of I have a motion.
What was the name, Mr. Chairman?
Cecil Crowe.
Cunningham, motion.
No, second. Anderson.
Second by Commissioner Hendricks.
He's served the community well already. He can continue to do a good job, I'm sure, in this position.
I believe he's the former mayor of the city.
Correct.
Hendricks?
No, just did all what she said.
Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clark, call the row. And I guess we need to state our name, who we're voting for. Is that correct, Mr. County Attorney? Or do we vote yes or no?
You would just vote yes or no, since you just have one candidate.
Okay, so what does it be, a yes or no vote?
Commissioner Bell?
Bell, yes, seats approved.
Barry?
Barry, yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East, yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Uh, yes.
Esther?
Esther, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Commissioner Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, yes.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen yes.
Cecil Crowe has been appointed to the E nine-one and the thank you off that I serve as chairman of that we won't miss
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Berry? Mr. Berry, yes. I'd, I'd like to, under special orders, to, and I really I need to make some help from the county attorney, but I'd, I'd like to amend our agenda to amend Resolution zero nine two zero zero four, which, which is our regular meeting and commission during COVID. I'd like to amend that resolution. County Commission would meet at Harriman High School, but unable to meet in person at Row County Courthouse.
I don't think we need, I mean, I don't think we need to vote on that. We can just go ahead and make the agreement.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that, Ron?
Basically, basically just amending our, our resolution of where we're meeting that during COVID, we could just meet in person at Harriman High School where we just avoid all things that are happening. You're having to postpone some of
I mean, I don't, I mean, the rest of y'all, if you want to make a motion for a second, that, that'll be fine, but I, I mean, I'd be happy going forward. We do
That's, that's fine. That's fine.
Is everybody all right with those meetings at Harriman High School for unable to meet at the courthouse?
Yes. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to defer twenty zero one and eleven twenty two till next month.
So, oh one and oh two?
Yes, sir.
Are there any objections to that? Mr. Woody, would you like to defer eleven twenty oh three also? Mr. Woody?
Uh, we can. That'd be fine.
Okay, so eleven twenty oh three, Madam Clark, also, with no objection. All right, anything else, Mr. Berry?
More of a question?
Yes, Mr.
We're preparing oh one and oh two and oh three?
Deferred until December.
I don't have any problem meeting at the school. But if we're going to sit side by side in those metal chairs like we were before, what's the difference other than just giving? I mean, we need to do distancing ourselves for the commissioners. Just as a note, you know, we got room for the people to come, and they can space eyes side by side, you know. So, we need to make sure that when we set that up, and I don't have a problem with
I believe me and
last time we were side by side, so we need to be able to stay distance too, if we're good, so just a comment.
I believe me and Mr. Woody can get there early enough to spread it out. Mr. County Attorney? Is there a, is there an option that we could advertise if some commissioners wanted to do this? Because I know some of my state meetings, we do it personally.
Under the, the executive order that went down about a week ago, county commissioners can participate electronically. They don't have to come to the physical meetings. You need to have a way for county commissioners who want to call in, participate electronically, to be heard.
Okay.
I don't, for the record, Chairman, I don't have a problem meeting there. I would just like to distance a little bit.
Okay, we'll work hard on that. All right.
Ain't nobody wants to sit with you anyway, Stan.
Let's go ahead and move forward. We got zoning resolutions. I believe we can go ahead and take up this first zoning resolution we have here. We're going to have a public hearing on that. Resolution zero nine twenty zero one zero, Resolution, Wrong County Planning Commission Recommended Action by the Wrong County Legislative Commission, the Resolution to amend the Wrong County zoning map as requested by Yvonne Beatty E. Tell at thirteen fifty Spring City Highway from M H P Mobile Home Park to A one Agricultural District. So, I have a motion.
Barry, so move. Yes, this was, this was an old trailer park. The trailers are now gone, and they're, they're just trying to rezone this property commercial to to try to sell it. I would yield to Mr. Kofar, if he would like to say.
Mr. Kofar?
Trying to do is, they want to be able to build single-family residences on the property, and within a mobile home park, you can't do that. So, this is a good move in rezoning this piece of property, and it comes with a unanimous recommendation from Planning Commission.
So, Berry?
Anytime we can add more homes, that's more votes for us down this way, guys. We appreciate your support.
Mr. Wilson?
Nah, nothing to add on it. I think that's pretty clear, cut, and dry. By the way, I'm getting a lot of feedback on my end. I don't
Mr. Meadows, Mr. East, but Mr. Berry's talking.
We, we are
See, I got all three of them muted now.
Yeah, we were, we were muted, but we were getting feedback, but
Okay, any more questions or comments on Resolution nine
They've got Meadows there, too.
Any more questions or comments on Resolution nine twenty zero one Z? Not Madam Clark, call the row.
Bell, yes.
Berry?
Berry, yes.
Breschers? Commissioner Breschers? Dave, Breschers?
Dave, you're muted. Dave Breschers, you are muted. We'll come back to him.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
Breschers?
Hello?
Breschers, how do you vote?
Yes, it goes out, and I'm getting a lot of feedback, too.
Commissioner East?
Commissioner East? You're muted. I see Abby.
Yes.
I see Abby, yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Yes.
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Hester, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, yes.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Resolution nine-twenty-zero-one-z is adopted. Resolution eleven-twenty-zero-one-z has been moved to December. Uh, under old business, both resolutions were pulled last month. I think they were included by mistake in this package, so they were both to be pulled. Is that right, Mr. Woody? Great. Okay, new business, we moved for Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-one-oh-two-oh-three. It's been moved till December, which brings us to Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-four, Resolution, authorize the county attorney to file lawsuits against each property owner regarding properties as listed on attached case request form by violating Rome County Resolution one-fourty-three regarding overgrown vegetation accumulated debris. I have a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Hickman.
Bell, second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Mr. Hickman?
I'll yield to Mr. Kofler if he has anything else.
Mr. Kofler, do you have anything to add?
If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them. These are two different pieces of property. One is down on, uh, Spring City Highway that, uh, is very overgrown, causing road in issues. The other one is on Second Street in Rockwood, and it is four-year mess, and we need to get taken care of.
Anything further, Mr. Hickman?
Nothing further.
Mr. Bell?
Need to clean Rockwood up, that's all.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-four? Madam Clerk, call the row.
Bell?
Bell, yes.
Berry?
Berry, yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Hester, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, yes.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
That's fifteen, yes.
Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-four is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me intervene some. I just got a text from some, uh, people trying to log in to the YouTube.
We're having some technical issues. It's being recorded and it will be uploaded directly after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-five, a resolution adopting updated property tax incentive program known as a payment and lieu tax pilot program.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Meadows, second by Mr. Moore. And right quick, in your packet, there was an amendment that was necessary to go for this. And I would entertain a motion to amend Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-five for the updated attachment that was included.
I'll accept that in my motion.
Mr. Moore?
Well, that works to me.
Okay, you got some.
We talked about this Budget Committee prior to this meeting, and I think this, the previous pilot pilot had a sunset clause in it, and it has to be revisited periodically every fifth year or so. Mr. Woody, would you like to add to that?
I believe Justin's on the line, too, if there are any questions.
Justin Snow, we are industrial agent that can also
In the policy procedures in, uh, section thirteen, it does state the program term, um, which the board, um, approved these policies and procedures at our twenty-six, October twenty-sixth meeting. But it does state that every three years, we do have to, um, come to county commission to reauthorize this policy. Um, so the last time this was reauthorized was in November of two thousand seventeen. Um, so the three-year term is up. Um, but like Mr. Ellis stated, um, everything that was approved three years ago is exactly the same, except for one amended, um, extra verbiage that's included in section.
Mr. Meadows, you still?
No, nothing further.
Mr. Moore?
I don't have anything further.
Okay, well.
Yeah, we have our chair with the industrial board here, Jim Palmer. We're glad to have he, him with us today.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Palmer. Do you have any questions or comments to add for the discussion?
No, I think this is a, a, a move ahead. Uh, nothing changes, as Justin said, except for a provision that requires an applicant to report after six months of their application being approved. If they, uh, have not signed the lease agreement, the pilot agreement, they have to report on what their intention is. So it's just, otherwise we have to wait a year and, you know, it's kind of, might as well get an update every, you know, after six months.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, and thank you, Justin, for joining us here. Mr. Moore?
I have no
Any more questions?
I have nothing further.
Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman Berry, uh, Mr. Palmer, I, do you know exactly, I know we don't have a lot of pilots in the county, but the pilots that we do have have worked very well, have they not?
Yes, and, and we have one pending with Earl Duff Subaru, uh, for their facility that's going to be, be built on the Gallagher Road. So it is a, it's a productive, uh, experience. The, uh, Hackney pilot expired. It was an incentive to induce them to locate in Rome County. It's now expired and they, they are back on the tax roll. So that's a very positive thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Any more questions or comments on eleven-twenty-oh-five? Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you, Justin, for joining us here. I believe that was included as a friendly amendment, so we'll go ahead and vote on the, uh, Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-five as amended. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Commissioner Bell?
Bell, aye.
Berry?
Berry, aye.
Breschers?
Breschers, yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East, yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Hester, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, aye.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-five is adopted as amended. Moving on to Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-six, Resolution authorized Rome County to make application for the twenty-twenty-one Community Development Block Grant.
Motion to approve Meadows.
My Meadows?
Second, Hooks.
Second by Hooks. Mr. Meadows?
Like the previous resolution, this has came, this came before Budget Committee as well, and it was recommended to commission. And this is something we do periodically and, uh, in the hopes that we get more grant money.
Mr. Hooks?
Nothing further.
Any more questions or comments? Eleven-twenty-oh-six.
Mr. Chairman?
Berry?
Berry, uh, Mr. Woody, who is applying for the grant this year?
So, so what we do every year is we put together our capital budgets, and then we go out and see what of the capital budgets can, we potentially can get a grant. So what we have budgeted, we have to basically buy one or two ambulances each year. This year it's time for two. Uh, we have that budgeted, and we are asking for those to be funded with this grant. So it is two ambulances for the ambulance department.
Is that where typically, does it go to the ambulance department?
We have done that the last couple of years, yes, this type. There's a couple of CDBGs, but this type is ones that we have used for ambulance procurement.
Very good. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments on eleven-twenty-oh-six? Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Bell?
Bell, yes.
Berry?
Berry, yes.
Breschers?
Breschers, yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East, yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Hester, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, aye.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
That's fifteen, yes.
Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-six is adopted. Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-seven, a resolution, amend the building grounds budget one-oh-one dash five-one-eight-zero-zero to provide funds for outstanding or outsourcing a portion of the custodial service of the Rome County Courthouse.
Bell?
Bell, motion?
Wilson, second.
Wilson, up second. Mr. Bell?
Is this in any way hurting the lady that is cleaning or cutting into her work at all?
No, we have, uh, we have one full-time, uh, employee now. We had somebody retired about six weeks ago.
Yeah, sweetheart.
Yeah, so, well, she, um, yes, this, uh, the one we have left would love to have some help, and we, we decided that we may want to look at contracting it out instead of putting another government employee on.
Why is that?
Well, what you have is, is you have the opportunity under a contract to manage it a little bit different, and if you want out of the contract, it's easier to get out of the contract sometimes than it is to, uh, sever relationships with employees. So, um, uh, Lynn, uh, put some specs out, uh, their bids went out on the street. I think we had two requests for proposals. Uh, they did the evaluation on it, and once that was done, uh, I think what, what you're going to have is you'll have a, a group of two or three that come in a couple of days a week that, so our permanent employee will work her regular duties to make sure all the garbage is, trash is emptied and everything, and, and then the bathrooms are cleaned, and then a couple of times a week, you'll have some more deep cleaning that takes place with a group.
So could this at any time possibly be outsourced to somebody outside this county?
Hey, yeah, at any point in time, the way competitive bid bidding works, um, that, yeah, we cannot discriminate against who makes proposals.
Yeah, well, I'm in favor of keeping it in county and just hiring another person. So that's all I got.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, nothing further to add. This has, uh, been through budget, uh, pretty self-explanatory on what's, what's going on, so that's all I have.
Hendrickson?
Mr. Henderson?
Uh, Mr. Woody, uh, it, could this possibly in any way absorb our county employee uh, as contract negotiations expand?
Uh, yeah, it's possible that it could. If we were to have the existing employee that were to choose to retire, take a job somewhere else, uh, we could then expand the contract to do more of it, uh, with the contractor. Uh, I don't know that we would want to do that. It just depends, and I, in the RFQ, it was, uh, went out and was received, I think, on the valuation, is a contractor uh, that does the Department of Energy facilities up there, or maybe the DOE headquarters. And chances are, for all practical purposes, they will, they will hire local individuals, uh, that would do the work, uh. You know, it, it's kind of like the custodial service for our schools was outsourced probably three decades ago. It was in the eighties, I think, is when the contract, uh, did for the, um, for the schools, is that, and they've been satisfied with their contractor.
Well, I mean, I would hate for us to bring in a contractor and then, um, somehow our employee get sucked into, to working for them and not the county.
Well, that'd be, that would probably be a choice more for the, um, employee and the employer than just, it just happening. I mean, it, it's not our intent to, uh, to, uh,
Mr. Ellis?
Let, let our employee go.
Okay, that, that's all I have.
Mr. Meadows?
Uh, Mr. Woody, this contract is for a year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we've got it under a year, and then you have some renewals in there if you want, want to.
Well, we could, if, if it doesn't work, we choose not to renew it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
If it doesn't work and we have grounds, we can get out of the contract anyway.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
Moore?
Mr. Moore?
Who is the contractor, can you say? I, you know, purchasing, handling that, and quite frankly, I do not recall, uh, they mentioned the name, uh, to me, but I, I don't recall, but it seemed like it's the one that's doing some of the DOE facilities up there, because a question came about as we looked at it on security issues. Well, I kind of like to know who and what I'm building for sometimes. Said some, a name source or somebody. I, I read the resolution or whatever, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Bell?
The, the way I see it, the only way we can assure somebody in this county gets a job, and there's a lot of them that need a job here in this county, um, is not to vote for this and, and, uh, just hire the position from somebody from Rome County. There's no need for us to outsource something that's, that's as easy as hiring, um, somebody here in the county. That's all I've got.
Any more questions or comments? Madam Clerk, call the row.
Commissioner Bell?
No.
Berry?
Berry, no.
Breschers?
No.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, no.
East?
East, no.
Ellis?
Yes, Ellis.
Gann?
No.
Hendrickson? Hendrickson?
Uh, no.
Hester?
No.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Moore?
Moore, no.
White?
White, no.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Five, yes, ten, no.
Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-seven fails. Resolution eleven-twenty-oh-eight, a resolution, amend the drug court function, the general fund one-oh-one. So I have a motion.
Bell?
By Bell, second by Hooks. Mr. Bell?
Somebody tell us something about it.
So, so this is a, uh, one of our grants that, uh, works with a, uh, Sessions judge on the drug court, and there's an adjustment in the salary under the grant, and, uh, there's, it's being paid for from grant funds. It's just arrangement within the budget, but anytime there is a salary that is being, uh, changed in a budget, it requires county commission's approval.
Mr. Bell?
Do you know what adjustment has been made?
The resolution reflects twenty-eight-hundred dollars.
It doesn't have a name.
I don't know who the employee is, if that's what you're asking, no.
All right, that's it.
Mr. Hooks?
No further.
Any more questions or, or comments? Eleven twenty oh eight.
Moore?
Mr. Moore.
I'm reading that resolution. So they were short eighteen hundred and twenty-six dollars? Is that what I'm reading on the?
Now, the, the salary was changed twenty-eight hundred. There was a shortage in the, when you, when you do grants, sometimes you don't spend it all. Sometimes you may spend a little bit more than that. And so all the grant money had been appropriated. So this has been adjustment inside.
I was just saying the last where as down there, we're short eighteen hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So Connie's on here. She may want to address that. You're talking, but you're muted, Connie.
I don't think she's muted. I don't think it's coming through her headset.
Well, she's, hers works a little bit different. No, can't, can't hear you. I might, I might try that next time.
Yeah. Good luck.
She's coming in there.
I, that's okay. I, I was just reading that. I've got a mirror computer here. I'm reading that.
All right. So what's? So what's happened here is the insurance was ninety-seven eighty-one. Usually it's about seven hundred. That insurance is to put in place in case this person does get the insurance. They don't have it right now, but it's to put it in there. So part of that in the adjustments in the state also has local. So what should have happened and it's, it's hid, there is a pulling from fund balance eighteen twenty-six on this, this one amendment.
Besides the twenty-eight hundred.
Well.
The amendment's twenty-six ninety-six down to the bottom. Is that correct?
Yes, and there was part of the local. I'm going to have to pull this one up. When it got amended, there's something, there's a Excel that's hid, but we're only needing eighteen twenty-six. There were some adjustments on this past one. It got submitted without me looking at it.
Okay, I didn't say in the bottom line that I said twenty-six ninety-six.
Yes, that we're going to have to come back part of the local match on this drug court grant.
Okay, so, so what do we really need? How much do we really?
Yeah, the resolution needs to be approved the way it is. I mean, it's, it's a twenty-eight, it's two thousand, twenty-six hundred dollar amendment.
Twenty-six ninety-six, basically down to the bottom. That's right.
Yes.
All right, I, I have no further questions.
Any more questions or comments? Eleven twenty oh eight. Madam Clark, Colorado, please.
Bell?
Bell, yes.
Barry?
Barry, yes.
Brashiers?
Brashiers, yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East, yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Dan?
Dan, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, aye.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Resolution eleven twenty oh eight is amended. Resolution eleven twenty oh nine, a resolution amend the twenty twenty-one appropriation resolution twenty-six longevity pay by clarifying the meaning of all county employees and to amend all qualifying primary government funds and their functions that will allow for bonuses to be paid to eligible employees in December twenty twenty.
Make a motion.
Okay, I got Meadows, I heard. Who was the?
Wilson.
Wilson, up second. Mr. Meadows.
You know, we did not approve any raises in this budget year, but with the tax collections being what they are, there's an opportunity for bonuses. And this has come through a budget committee a couple, well, we talked about it at length as to how to define full-time versus part-time and how to get the money out. I would like to defer to Mr. Woody or, or Connie, if one who'd like to go add to that, add to this.
Woody?
So Mr. Meadows did a good job. There, it's doing two things. We are clarifying the longevity part of the pay. That's been in the resolution. It was probably approved in the mid-two thousand. Been here more than twenty-five years or under twenty-fifth year, they get that longevity. We added a caveat in there because it came into question, well, if you had a part-time person here for twenty-five years, it basically says it will be prorated.
And what's that amount?
Pardon?
What's that amount?
That amount is twenty-five hundred dollars. So if you make it in county government for twenty-five years, you'll get a twenty-five hundred dollar bonus.
Is that every year, that forward or just one?
One time, one time.
I know these questions are coming. I'm clearing them up.
Okay, so one time. And now we're saying, all right, we, we can prorate that because we do have some part-time employees that are, you know, if somebody does twenty-five years, I don't think we have any, but we have some that's been here for a while. And then the next part of the resolution is the bonuses, and it's a twelve hundred dollar bonus. It's a look back prorated by month. So if you were hired last month, you'd get a hundred dollars. If you was hired two months ago, you'd get two hundred dollars. The resolution talks about when you have to be hired. So if you're hired tomorrow, you don't get anything, for instance. So we are using some of the Tin Cam money, or at least the replacement of the existing county money. That this is where the county has some restrictions on some money coming in. Those restrictions were lifted. They basically said that all of our ambulance salaries from March the first to now, sheriff's department employees, jail, and they basically let it be essential top workers, people somewhat on the front line. Could be extended all the way, I guess, to people because the courthouse stayed open the whole time. But it kind of released all the restrictions on that. Insist employees were not given raises. Budget committee worked this up at twelve hundred dollars. And again, prorated, depending on when you were hired, if you've been here a year, you get twelve hundred dollars, half a year, six hundred dollars. If you're part-time, it gets prorated also. It's because we have a lot of convenience center workers out there that are part-time. And we will prorate that. They may be here for twelve months, but they may only work ten hours a week. Or they may work twenty hours a week. So that's going to be prorated, prorated also.
How does your cost split with that between fund balance and grant? What we're going to be paying now?
Well.
It's about four hundred thousand dollars that, so of part of the, part of the grant money, we, we're putting in ionization units in county buildings. We have a little unit that comes into the courthouse. It's probably ready tomorrow that we bought that we do not have to take temperatures. You just go up to this machine. If you have a high temperature, it will, it will sound off and then security can, can deal with someone who has a high fever. There's a lot of, not equipment, but supplies that were purchased. So we put in about three million dollars into the portal.
The whole total was over seven million.
Over seven million. These are costs that, these were salaries by and large. I mean, part of my salary was eligible because what we did was COVID for so long. So we're going to get seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars coming in to our facility. Of that, the new expenses were about three hundred thousand where we bought things that helped protect our employees and the public. The other four hundred was just available. This takes care of, or uses about little less than three hundred thousand. You, you, you will have incorporated, it's not really reflected here because without our budgets may have it in there, is the social security, Medicare and retirement that has to be charged along with this. So if you're looking at the general fund, it says it's two hundred and nineteen thousand. And then you'll add another probably fifteen percent to that that will be benefits.
Okay, right quick. Mr. Meadows, you still have the floor. Do you have anything else?
We were going to, we were going to, the budget committee discussed about having an amendment, just to clarify, in, in inserting on the first or the, the second.
For us to be able to do this. This is a small token, I think, of saying our appreciation to our county employees. We appreciate them greatly and I'm glad that we are now able to offer a bonus. I hope in the near future that we're able to provide them a raise, something that they have not been forwarded in, in quite a while. But I am glad for this, that they can have this. And it's supposed to be done according to Executive Woody around December the first for our employees. So yeah, I'm definitely for this.
Mr. Henderson.
So is this for all county employees, the highway department, parks and area, landfill, all them?
It's, it's all primary government employees. And if you'll look at it, it's, it's not school employees because they, they receive raises this year. They do their own bonus stuff. So it is general fund employees, courthouse, jail, solid waste, highway, recycling, ambulance employees, and anything basically except education.
So all county employees minus education?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
That's, that's all. Thank you, sir.
Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barry.
Just, just to be clear. So what we're doing is, is if you've, if you've been here twenty years, you will receive a twenty-five hundred dollar bonus.
Twenty-five years.
Excuse me?
Twenty-five years, I believe, right?
Okay, twenty-five years, twenty-five hundred dollars. And this year, if you've been here the full twelve months, you will receive twelve hundred dollars.
That's correct.
So less than twenty-five years, twelve months, you get twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, so the twenty-five hundred dollars was approved by commission in the mid-two thousands.
Right.
That is in the appropriation resolution. All we were doing there was clarifying it to make it eligible for a part-time person who works twenty-five years. So that's the clarification that's separate. Oh, I don't even think we're going to have anybody that applies, but that question came up to us as people, you know, look at their employees and stuff, you know, next year. So we decided to clear that up so we can get it in next year's resolutions also.
I, I don't have any problem. I'm just trying to be sure that, so, so we've got twelve hundred dollars for any, any full-time county employee that will have been here one year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. More.
I, I've been reading this as you've been talking and I got, I'm sure if you're, and I have no problem with it. I just can't find in there what you're saying.
Well, that's, that's what we ask. Yeah, that, that, that's what we ask for to be put in the second, not be it further resolved.
That's why we, we've had a friendly amendment on that family that was discussed in budget.
Well, I heard that. I was just trying to look earlier before it didn't say anything about that. And I was trying to read down to there. And I guess I was just missing it till I heard the amendment, I guess.
Well, if, if you look, if you look, if you look at the, the spreadsheet there in row number nine, that's the general fund one oh one fifty-one, seven sixty.
Twelve hundred, I got it.
Is it? So there's only one employee there.
Anything else?
Fifty-one, seven fifty is the count. I got it.
Yes.
All right, that's good enough. I'm good. I just, I was having a problem finding where you were saying that. I saw it on the spreadsheet, but I'm good.
Any more questions? Eleven twenty oh nine. Madam Clark, Colorado, please.
Bell?
Bell, aye.
Mr. Berry?
Barry, yes.
Brashiers?
Brashiers, yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East, yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Dan?
Dan, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks?
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, aye.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Resolution eleven twenty oh nine is approved with the friendly amendment that was added to it. Resolution eleven twenty ten, a master recreation planning resolution establishing the goals and incentives of approving a plan forward related to Rome County Parks and Recreation Tourism Industry of Rome County.
Meadows, motion to approve.
Motion by Meadows.
Up second.
Hooks on second. I believe everyone received a copy of this in their email from Mr. Berry, Mr. Meadows.
We discussed this at budget committee and I'd like to defer to Mr. Woody for explanation.
So what we were trying to do here is get it kind of more succinct, what has been approved in capital budgets, approved by commission, and that was in our three or four planning documents. Every now you look at it, you could almost expand it to five. So over the last twenty-four months, you know, there's been a heck of a lot of planning that's been going on in our facilities. And some of it gets incorporated in the budget every year. Some of it is potentially great idea that there's not enough financial resources to do. So what we tried to do is say, okay, we looked at all the documents and we tried to incorporate in the primary initiatives. This is kind of a resolution that gives us direction, but basically the budget is also giving us a lot of direction. What we were trying to do here is to make sure we had one document together. So when we apply for grants, people ask where, where's the direction? We can say, okay, here's in, instead of having to go through two hundred and fifty pages of planning documents, we've tried to summarize it the best we can, put a few dollars to it. Some of the things, as you read the resolution, our resolution's already been passed. It shows the progress the commission has been making. For instance, that we received some more NRT money, where we, we put all the courtesy docs in around the reservoir. We approved the resolution two months ago because one of the parties didn't use all their money. The, the state came to us and said, do you want it? You want to approve that resolution? We incorporated that in there. It shows that we go out and we try to get solicitations from grants, from corporations to do various things. The budget committee, we talked about this probably twenty or thirty minutes. We try to look at each section of our portfolio of assets to deal with it. There are two items in here that are really open that commission needs to really consider having workshops on. One of them is the Candy Creek Recreation Area. And the other one is Riley Creek, because we have a lot of options in both of those that we may want to have a whole lot of community input. And then, you know, Riley Creek is a gem, but at the same time, it's a nineteen sixty campsite that needs a lot of infrastructure. And we are not generating enough cash flow based on the forty to forty-three sites to do the reinvestment of the infrastructure that's needed over there. The roads, the water, you know, bathhouses that are fifty years, sixty years old. And, you know, we're having some issues there. And I, I've had one call and one Zoom with the TVA on Riley Creek about the options. And one of our options that commission is really going to have to debate is do we just walk away from it? Do we walk away from it, turn it back to TVA and the land becomes barren again? TVA, will you allow us to go from forty campsites, maybe to seventy, which would generate enough money to do infrastructure improvements? It's just a combination of a lot of things. So commission, you, you all, I mentioned this about two months ago. You need to take this resolution, you know, look at it, especially the Riley Creek and the Candy Creek Recreation Area. The resolution says, okay, here's some options. We're going to be studying them. It doesn't do anything direct on any one of those sites other than it allows us to, you know, put some kayak launches in at Riley Creek and, I mean, in the Candy Creek Recreation Area along with some trails. Because that, we already had approval to do that anyway.
Mr. Meadows, if you still have the floor.
One recommendation I would make on this is we could even have a. One recommendation I would make on this is we could even have a workshop between the commission and the rec committee, something like that, and kind of look at this even further. I think this would be a real good blueprint for us going further. The way I understand it, I mean, we're not spending any money, we're just attaching some costs and kind of looking a little bit into the future on that. I personally have no, no problems with the resolution as it is, but I would like to amend it, to call for a workshop as soon as we can, you know, put one together between us and all interested parties.
Will you take?
Public included.
Will you take that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Hooks?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Meadows.
Let me, let me just ask something before we amend it though. I mean, we're trying to get a document together and I, I think we need to do exactly what you're saying. I don't know whether we need that in that amendment in this because we want to be able to take this resolution and spread it with our grant applications around. We want to be able to take it and, and do the initial thing. And I, I think what you're saying we need to do, I don't know that we ought to make that an amendment.
Mr. Meadows, if it's fine, we'll go ahead and get, get that workshop.
That's what I, I would like for y'all to do.
As long as we have an understanding that we'll follow this with a workshop, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
We'll get together and we'll do it.
And this is, this is a document we work on. So next month, we, we, we want to spend any money on something here that has already been appropriated. You all have to approve that anyway. So this is just saying, okay, goodness, we want to try to, try to get some of this stuff accomplished right here the next one to five years. It, it, you know, the document, if you read it, it, it shows that some things in our planning report that we're not even trying to tackle right now. You know, somebody had made a comment when the public meetings, we want indoor swimming pools. It's a great concept maybe, but it's something that we're not doing on our initial initiative.
By the way, I kind of see this, it's kind of like a living document and it's a 10, 15, 20, even 20-year plan and it's going to be changing. But I think we need to, we're at a point where we need to really get some further input and some buy-in from the other affected parties, citizens and people like that. Because we have a real opportunity here.
Then you'll get together and get that workshop going.
Fair enough.
Mr. Hooks.
Henderson, aye.
Any more questions or comments?
More?
Mr. Moore.
I can't leave it alone. So on the last further resolve down there, what you're telling me right now that you're using this blueprint to apply for grants and solicit funds for projects and then the expenditures are subject to the appropriations, is that coming back to us?
Yeah, I mean, that is exactly right. Some of the money's already been appropriated as we do every year. So that's, we can do that without this resolution anyway. Anything new is going to come back to you anyway.
Okay, all right, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure there's a whole lot of stuff in there and a lot of that we'll get to on a work session with Riley Creek, I agree with you. I've got a problem spending a million five on TVA leased property, you know. We, I, I feel like wrong county ought to be the recreation capital of East Tennessee as far as lakes and things that we've got. Just my opinion of what we ought to do. So, and I've said that and I, I've sticked to it because we obviously don't have much industry here. So looks like we might try to develop some camping spaces and get people in here from somewhere else and bag groceries and gas and so forth. So that's my opinion. So, thank you very much.
It's a good segue. Let me just mention this. We have Riley Creek under a license agreement. So that really makes it hard to make any investments under a license agreement. So if in fact we were to do anything, at least a lease, we could get a long-term lease. Very, very good point.
Okay, any more questions on resolution? Mr. Berry.
So the amendment's taken off the table. Is that what I understand?
Yes, we're going to have a workshop.
So, so Mr. Woody, is this something, is this something that has to be done tonight? Can we, can we put it off for a month?
We started working on this a couple of months ago. I would soon pass it and then if we will need to do any adjustments to it, let's do adjustments next month, the following month or whatever because.
I guess I would just like to see it go to the, to the sports rec committee. I mean, and, and, and Mr. Moore is exactly right. If you look at our recreation, that's what we're fast becoming is, and that's where we need to be. But this, this thing, you know, has, has a lot in there and, and if we can, if we could wait a month and have it go to the sports committee and, and then come back to us and, and follow through because there are some, you know, we, we basically are, we, we've got dollars anticipated with all of these things. And obviously we're, a lot of it will depend on grants and stuff. But if we could, if we could wait a month, I, I think we'd be better served of digging into it and really seeing what I was in here. I, I would make the motion that we do amend it to, to postpone it a month.
You want to make a motion to defer this for a month? Great.
For a month, yes.
I've got a second. Back it, back it by Mr. Bell. Mr. Berry, do you have anything?
No, I just, I just think it's a lot to digest in, 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 in one, at one, at one sitting. And I, like I say, we, if, if it's not going to hurt anything for a month, then we, we'll, we'll meet and, and, and try to look through this thing and, and bring our committee, our committee report back.
Mr. Bell, do you have anything else?
Nothing, let's vote.
All right.
I would, I would prefer it not being, and the biggest reason I, I prefer it not being is it comes down to, you know, kind of what happened on the Candy Creek Recreation Bridge. You know, we had the money setting on that for eight or nine years and we postponed it eight or nine years because it kept getting deferred by the legislative body. So I, I, I think what it does if we adopt it now, it basically pushes, and, and I think it needs to be pushed a little bit, the county commission to start getting the groups together or the workshops together to do Candy Creek Recreation or Riley Creek. That's my biggest hangup is if we can defer it, which means that we know we're not going to have this joint meeting or group meeting and everything that's in here has already been approved by the legislative body in segments anyway. We just tried to get them together, but I mean, it's up to, it's up to you all everywhere, how you want to do it.
I've got a motion.
I think we're deferring it for, we're deferring it for one month. We're not deferring it except for one month. And then just to take it, take it to the proper committee. Just take it to the proper committee.
The Candy Creek Recreation Bridge, we had the money set up for that and it got deferred for seven or eight years because we never, you know, we didn't have the right commission in place to, to do it. And we, we left a great opportunity in that recreation area. I, I met with the state about a hotel and a restaurant over there and they looked at me and they said, there's no way to get there. I said, I know. We got the money to do it. The commission won't approve it yet. But, you know, we had Governor Jim Henry in, in the state at the time and, and that opportunity missed us. I just don't want us to have any, any more opportunities that miss us.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to defer till next month's meeting. I already got a motion and a second. Any more discussions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moore.
Can we make sure that we schedule, if we do put this out? And I, I really don't have a problem because I think we ought to come back, go take a look at it. I don't have a problem passing it. I don't have a problem deferring it a month. But for Mr. Woody, what do, what do you got that you need to do for a month? What do you want to get started in a month that you can't get started?
We can go ahead and get started. We've got a, a park application that is going to be filed in the next 30 days. I would love to file this with it, but we don't have to. You, you know, in two more weeks, I, I was talking to one of the corporate donors that we had some monies that was potentially from them. It's, it's available now. It may be available in 60 days. That I don't know.
You, you can still do these things. It's already approved, right? There's nothing in here.
I can do things that's already approved.
There's nothing in here that you can do without bringing it back before expenditure anywhere, right?
That if it's not already budgeted and we want it to be budgeted, it has to come back. What I can't do is I can't, I can't file this resolution in two weeks on a grant application if it's not approved.
Mr. Chairman?
I know, I, I've looked at the Riley's Creek thing and I agree, we need to have a work session because that's a lot of ifs and ands and there's could be a million five and, you know, that's a lot of money to look at and a lot of things to do just to sit here and look at the resolution and I agree.
I agree.
I don't.
I'm not going to vote, I'm not going to defer. I'm voting no to defer.
Yeah.
Moore, she still has.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hook.
Well, I have a lot of empathy with Ron Woody because I'm in his seat in front of the board. And I'm always like.
Turn your mic off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this is a blueprint that has been put together with, it, it's got some things that we have already approved and it's got some things that we hope to have approved and nothing is going to be expenditure wise, nothing can be spent that if it's not already been approved in the budget before it comes back to this body. This, this is a document that says, hey, we're serious about our, our parks and wrecks in our county or, or, and our sites that recreational sites. So, you know, I don't, I don't see that postponing it a month. I would look, I would love to see this document go out with any grant application that we might be sending out next week, two weeks from now or next month. And I think that we need to vote to, to allow this blueprint to be, be presented. The committees can take this blueprint and work off in this blueprint. We can work off this blueprint at a workshop and we can, or the committees can work off this blueprint. So I, I think we just need to move forward with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moore.
And anyway, so whether the, and I tend to agree, if I'm going to walk, walk and talk the talk, I guess I would show up a little bit. So what would that get, what does that get us, I guess, from having to defer it? We're going to meet anyway and we're going to go over these figures and things that we want to do with this blueprint. And I don't see that this hurts us a thing. Hurts us a bit as far as going ahead and doing that. I understand going to the committees, you know, but I, I'd like to just take it and go on with it if you want to.
Mr. Berry.
Get it on the books.
For, for the sake of progress and holding up any grants that might be forthcoming in the next two weeks, I'll withdraw my second.
I withdraw my amendment.
Thank you both, Chairman.
We're back on most, uh, resolution 112010. Any more questions or comments? Madam Clark, call her up.
Mr. Bell?
Bell, aye.
Berry?
Aye.
Rashiers?
Rashiers, yes.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East. Yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Jan?
Jan, yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, aye.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, if aye.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Resolution 112010 is adopted. Now moving on to resolution 112011 that we waived the 12-day rule for, this will be our last item for the night. The resolution to amend the general fund 101 for additional funding for nonprofit function 55590 that would go toward the funding of the child advocacy center. I've got a motion.
Motion to approve.
Meadows?
So Jan, second.
Second by Mr. Jan. Mr. Meadows?
We had stated earlier that our revenue has improved over what we'd anticipated back when we put the budget together. I think we quite appropriately cut the nonprofit budget as well as some others just because we did not know what was going to be coming. The downside of that is we are, there are some needy nonprofits out there and then one that really comes to mind is the Child Advocacy Center. They have, they're asking us for $10,000 and last year, last fiscal year, they provided to us a little over a hundred thousand dollars worth of services, including forensic interviews, forensic medical exams. And as far as what they had done for us, they gave, they did 213 forensic interviews at 243 apiece. They did forensic medical exams. They did five of those at 750 and 450, 64 therapy sessions at $150 apiece. We have people in wrong county jail right now or that, that have been charged with 42 counts of child abuse and the C D, the CAC is very much involved in that. But for $10,000, we get over a hundred thousand dollars worth of services for them, from them. And Chris Ednaus Longmire, the director is on the call. If anybody has a question for her. But I think we are at a point now, we need to help them, help us. So I think for a $10,000 donation, you know, when we get a hundred thousand dollars worth of services for that, that's a pretty good investment to some of our most vulnerable victims in the city, in the county. So that's all I have.
Mr. Jan.
No, I think Darryl said it very well. I agree completely.
Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Hooks.
Mr. Moore first, then Mr. Hooks.
Okay, what, did we give them anything in the budget earlier?
No.
Did they, they didn't get anything in the budget that we put together earlier? So I would just say the, on your analysis, on your undersigned balance, that we're still at $151,000 even after giving that. So it's not going to hurt you.
Mr. Hooks.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, all the years I was an investigator, it would have been really nice if we'd had a facility like this that we could have went to and had the expertise there to interview our children, keep them from having to be interviewed over and over and over. And this, this facility has worked for years and I'm going to support this 100%.
Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Berry.
I, I guess in the past, this, this is more than given CAC and, and in several years. I think in, back in 2013, they had asked for like 25,000. I guess my, my concern is, is that we had gone from 25,000 down to 6,000, down to 3,000 because of the other nonprofits also involved. So what we're doing now is we've gone from cutting all of our nonprofits except for the, except for the ones that, the Michael Dunn's, the Mideast, the ones that we, that we gave to originally because we didn't have the money. So now we found some money and so now we're picking out one nonprofit out of, out of all of the others that, that we're getting a little slice of the pie. So I really wish there was some way that we could take that 10,000 and, and, and divvy it up a little bit so that several others could, could get some money. Or if we have, if we have additional funds, let's add some to that and get back to where we were with the nonprofit committee and, and allocate some more funds. We've had, and, and I don't doubt, I don't doubt that Meadows gave off. When we looked into, into the financial reports that we were getting, it really wasn't necessarily what we were told that, that was happening. So I would, I would, I would like if we're going to give another 10,000, I'd like Jan to come up with another 10,000 to give the other, to spur the other nonprofits.
Okay, you're making a motion to give another 10,000, please.
To add, to add, to add to the nonprofit total and, and give, if you're going to give it again, then allocate another 10 to give the other folks who have come to us asking for nonprofits.
Could you list those others people with split that other 10,000 up that you're recommending, please?
Well, I know we had a, we had a uh, a neutering service d- down here that, 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 that we gave a two thousand dollars to and they gave, and then they got a two thousand dollar grant.
Okay, so we got, we got, hold on just a second. We got ten thousand dollars for the Child Advocacy Center? You know, that other ten thousand you're proposing, you want to give two thousand for the free?
Well, or just, yeah, or, or have the, have a nonprofit committee look at it and see. I don't, I don't really, I mean,
Okay.
I don't think there's several others.
Hold on, Mr. Berry, hold on just a second. You made a motion to give ten more thousand dollars. Let's, let's see who you want to split that up between. So I hear ten thousand dollars, two thousand of that to the plan.
And, and I, I guess I'll, I'll yield to, I'll yield to uh, to Ms. Cook to tell me who, who we gave it to last year. She would have the list of who we gave the money to.
You're not, you're not coming through, Ms. Cook.
I say I would, I would yield to, to uh, Ms. Cook.
Hold on a second. She's gotta go to Mr. Woody's office.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moore.
Um, to try to be the peacemaker, I guess. Um, I, I kind of remember that now that you bring it up, Mr. Berry. What about if we let the, the committee come back, go ahead and run this if that's what the pleasure be? And let's let that nonprofit committee come back with some of those people that got cut and their recommendations. And then we can go ahead and maybe put another ten grand in there if the revenue stays like it is. What do you think?
That's fine with me. That's fine with me.
So Mr. Moore, your proposal to go ahead of the Child Advocacy Center and kick the ten thousand dollars over to the not-for-profit committee, correct?
No, I just say let the committee go and decide who needs it and bring it back on a separate entity. Go ahead and run this motion as it goes. Take the Child Advocacy ten with the understanding that, that committee on the-
Nonprofits.
Yeah, committee on nonprofit. Go back and have a meeting and look and see who got cut instead of trying to determine that on the spot right now. I know him and I'll support it or whatever if we can, if that's what we need to do and come back and make some recommendations, tough to say a ten thousand dollar, something like that. How about that?
So we're gonna take the ten thousand to Child Advocacy and go back and allocate the rest?
That's just a suggestion. I, I'm not trying to knock around down everything you do, but I mean, I-
I understand, but if we're gonna make motions, we need to be clear and precise what we're gonna make. But I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Berry.
Then, then let's make, let's make that, that, that amendment that we, because we're gonna have to recreate a nonprofit committee. We took the nonprofit committee away and we took all of the nonprofit money away.
We still ha- we still have a nonprofit committee that's enacted until December thirty-first. So we'll have a committee that can go forward with that.
Okay, then I would move that we just send it back to that nonprofit committee then to allocate those additional funds.
Okay, so I got a motion for my Mr. Berry. We'll go ahead and do the CAC's ten thousand dollars. We're gonna take the rest of the money that's left in the not-for-profit fund back to the nonprofit committee to allocate that money, correct?
I'll second that, Meadows.
I miss you, Mr. Berry. Back on the minute.
That's fine.
Meadows, you have anything on the amendment? Okay, so everybody's clear what we're voting on?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I want to know.
We're voting on an amendment. The CAC is gonna get ten thousand dollars. We're kicking the, the rest of that leftover money from the not-for-profit line item to the not-for-profit committee to make recommendations to other not-for-profits. That's what we're gonna be doing. Okay, don't make this more complicated than it has to be. Okay?
Yeah, so, so, so you all are making an appropriation of ten thousand dollars in this resolution. Now, the way this amendment is, are you talking about adding another sixty or seventy-two?
What I just stated was, we're gonna go take, how much money did we have available in that line item to give?
No, J. Row, we've appropriated it all.
Barry's emotion, motion is to add ten more thousand back. We're gonna kick it back to the not-for-profit committee to disseminate to other not-for-profits, correct? Any objections to that?
Yeah, yeah, so they're making the twenty thousand dollar appropriation.
Okay, so that's twenty thousand. Is anybody have, is everybody clear?
I'm sorry, but I, I am a little lost here. So-
We're taking ten thousand dollars, giving it to the CAC, okay?
Yes, but Mr. Woody just stated that we have zero balance in that at this time. Is that correct?
Mr. Barry's motion, we're gonna lock, move, I guess, ten thousand from the general fund over to the not-for-profits to allocate to other not-for-profits. That's where we're at.
So we're gonna take it out of the general fund and move it over to that and then allocate it, that ten thousand's to different charities?
Correct.
Same place we're getting this ten thousand, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Is everybody? Speak now or forever hold your peace?
You're, you're making, what you're, what you're doing, you're making a twenty thousand dollar appropriation.
As stated.
Ten is aside, already assigned. The other ten is not assigned yet.
And that'll be determined by, uh, recommended by the committee, correct?
Come back. And then it'll come back to this board commission.
Good, I'm good.
Mr. Woody.
Henderson.
Henderson.
Mr. Woody.
Mr. Woody.
Woody.
Okay. He's on the line. Go ahead and ask your question.
So how's that, how's this gonna affect your uh, fund balance? Do they plenty enough in there to do what we're talking? I, I'll, I'll tell what I've told many boards in the past. We can spend it all till it's gone.
I don't think out of our budget. Now, hold on a second. I don't think out of our budget, a ten thousand dollar appropriation is gonna break this. Okay, any more questions on the amendment before we vote? Okay, our amendment is ten thousand dollars to CAC and another ten thousand dollars from the general fund for the not-for-profit community to decide who should do it a month. It's gonna come back before the commission for the approval.
I have this.
I have a question.
Should this go back to the budget committee?
It'll go back to the budget committee table before it comes back to the commission.
I have a question. Most of these committees, nonprofit organizations, it was cut out due to the fear of a tax increase, correct?
Yeah.
But we, we've, we've added back now at least four different, four or five different funds. Like where's this money coming from? Are we gonna be back in the same situation we were just a few months ago? By adding this money back, appropriating this money.
Yeah, yeah, right now we're at about a four penny tax increase for next year.
What's a ten thousand dollar allocation tax increase, Mr. Woody?
It's a one uh, uh, one tenth of a penny.
So right now we're speaking about a one tenth of a penny.
And do we have any falling off by the end of the year?
No, I mean, all these things are estimates and, you know, we, we probably have a balance of three and a half to four million dollars now. We're expecting at the end of the year to have three and a half to four million dollars. We, you know, uh, but if we don't have a tax increase, that thing slow, slowly goes from three and a half million to three million and it kind of snowballs on you, which has happened to the commission before. So when the budget was adopted, there were a couple of things that were in play. One, we knew that eight hundred thousand dollars of revenue, we would never see that we had to work that back at some point in time. Uh, we also were unsure because of the COVID, how that was gonna impact us. That's the reason, you know, I, I talked a little bit earlier about a, a code position that we eliminated. You know, a building inspector that we eliminated and um, you know, we're gonna be looking at that. That's gonna cost you some money. Will you do it? Will you not do it? Will you abolish codes altogether? Glenn, sorry you're listening to this, but you know, it is not a required service under Tennessee law. And once you-
Can we draw, can we sort of draw, can we sort of draw this back in? We're talking about a ten thousand dollar allocation right now.
You're talking about a twenty thousand dollar allocation.
Actually twenty, isn't it?
Hold on back a second. We're back. Mr. Hickman, I have the floor. Do you have any more questions, Mr. Hick?
Uh, nothing, bud.
Okay. So, Mr. Hester, do you have any more questions?
Well, I, I just remembered last, the budget uh, drill that we did and we did a twelve hour, at the twelfth hour, did a no pay raise for county employees and everything else. Now we're looking at uh, giving bonuses. Now we're looking at uh, adding ten thousand here and ten thousand there. I do support the original resolution, but when we start amending these resolutions at the last minute and we start increasing ten thousand here and there, I'm not for it. But I do support the original resolution as it's written, so.
That's why we're about to vote, that's why we're about to vote on the amendment, right? But, are you, any more questions? We're voting again only amendment. This is adding extra ten thousand dollars to the ten thousand dollars that's already appropriated. So we're voting only amendment. Madam Clark, call the roll.
No?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Rashers?
No.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, no.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Ellis, no.
Gann?
Gann, no.
Hendrickson?
Hendrickson, no.
Hester, no.
Hickman?
Hickman, no.
Hooks, no.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, no.
White?
White, no.
Wilson?
Wilson, no.
That's three yes and twelve no.
Okay, amendment fails. We're back on our Resolution eleven twenty oh one as originally. Any more questions or comments? It's being done. Madam Clark, call the roll on Resolution eleven twenty eleven, please.
Commissioner Bell?
Bell, no.
Barry?
No.
Rashers?
No.
Cunningham?
Cunningham, yes.
East?
East, no.
Ellis?
Ellis, yes.
Gann?
Gann, yes.
Hendrickson?
Just to clarify, this is to give CAC ten thousand, right?
Yes, sir.
Raise taxes.
Henderson's, yes.
Yes.
Hester?
Esther, yes.
Hickman?
Hickman, yes.
Hooks?
Hooks, yes.
Meadows?
Meadows, yes.
Moore?
Moore, no.
White?
White, yes.
Wilson?
Wilson, yes.
That's ten yes and five no.
Resolution is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Gentlemen, again, I ask you to please keep Mr. Brackett in your prayers, City of Kingston City Councilman. He's struggling tonight for his life, so let's pray for him. And next month, we'll either be at the courthouse or we'll be at Harriman High School. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on a second. Hold on, hold on. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, it's Beth. On behalf of myself and staff, I'd like to thank everybody for voting for the, the bonuses. Uh, my staff has worked really hard while we were closed and also since we've opened back up. So I do appreciate it.
I wear size fourteen, Beth.
All right, buddy.
I missed the more to adjourn. Second by Mr. White. Mr. Moore, you have anything?
It's been a pleasure doing business with you tonight.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, thank you.
I would like to know how Commissioner Hickman has had those pork chops on since five o'clock.
All in favor of we adjourn, say aye. We are adjourned.